...of no tan in these collages. No tan is translated as light, dark, and is used to refer to the balance and interaction of light and dark in a composition or design. To make these designs, students all started with a square of paper, as they cut out shapes and placed them outside the square and created larger symmetrical shapes where one side is white and the other side is black. Very cool. Right over here, I think, I love these colors here, is gadget prints. Second grade students were introduced to printmaking tools and then mixed tints and shades of the cool color family to create these experimental designs. They first mixed black with blue, green, and violet to create shades of these colors. These colors were applied to the background using a brayer. Next, students mixed white with these colors to create lighter tints. Students then completed their designs by printing using found objects. And moving over to here, we have fifth grade relief prints. Fifth grade students explored mark making and positive and negative space in these relief prints, which were inspired by nature. Students experimented with impressing a variety of marks in a thin styrofoam sheet in order to create visual texture. Since the final prints only use one color ink, students had to think about how to convey their ideas using only line and shape. And back here, very cool looking monsters, as you can see. First grade students read the book Bye Bye Big Bad Bully Bug. I know, it's adorable. By Ed Emberly. Ed Emberly is an award-winning writer and illustrator of over 100 children's books. This book was a perfect jumping off point for students to explore color, mixing symmetry, and collage as they created their own monsters. Very, very cool.
[inaudible]
Yes, and next, we want to get to the exciting thing, exciting for us, I think. Right in our room today, we have the entire, I think, hockey team, that spy punters who just skated their way to victory. And I wasn't at the game. Actually, Paul is at the game, he's going to tell about it. But from everything I've heard, it was incredibly exciting and that you guys performed just admirably with great teammanship, you know, really coming together as a team to support each other, really good sports. And I just heard so many positive things about you, not only as athletes, but as individuals and, you know, community members. And that's just a really great thing to hear. So I'm really excited. So Paul's going to talk about the game that he saw. Go ahead.
I mean, how cool is this? I mean, the anxiety of going into overtime and then pulling it off with 15 seconds into overtime and turning anxiety into instant joy. I mean, we were down by that end of the rink, so we were able to see exactly what happened with that final goal. It was a thing of beauty. But it was pretty obvious that those guys from Central Catholic were big and they were hitting you really hard. And it didn't really matter because you just kept going at them and you kept getting up and you kept making smart plays and you kept working as a team. And you just maintained your momentum and did what it took to bring a victory back for you. And it goes noticed that, first of all, this is only the third public school to win the Super Eight. It's incredibly difficult to beat teams that are able to recruit players. And that we have a group, core group of seniors who stayed with Arlington High and played hockey at Arlington High. And that shows another, a real love for the town, love for your school, and a real commitment to each other as a team. And it's that team commitment that obviously was the thing that made it happen. And I congratulate you and your coach for building that camaraderie and team. It was a lot of fun being down at the Garden that Sunday night. And, you know, I hope that this is something you'll have all your life is a tremendous achievement and something really fun and important that you did. And know that you can keep on doing great things no matter what you choose to do.
Thanks. So Coach Missouri is going to come up and introduce players, and we have a special --
Say a few words.
Oh, say a few words, please. And we have a gift for you as well.
Well, it was an exciting night. You know, it was a great night for the community, great night for our team, great night for Arlington Athletics and Arlington High School. One of the things that people probably don't realize is, you know, it's great being the coach, but you need such a support system around you. And we appreciate everything the school committee's done for athletics over the years. Dr. Boddy's been great. They think this is our third championship together back in Winchester. When she was on school committee, we won a couple back then, and I was the Winchester coach. We had great support from our principal, our athletic director throughout. So, you know, one thing as a coach is you want to just be given the tools to be able to perform and do your job. And, you know, the support system is outstanding and we appreciate that very much so. So thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and introduce the team. One at a time, they go up, get their hats, I'll introduce the --
Can I beg your, Dr. Boddy would want to say a couple of words as well.
Well, I also want to say that it requires great leadership, and I want to thank you for the leadership and the mentoring that you've done for all of our students. It's been, you've done an excellent job, and we're very proud of all of our students. I think one of the things I was really proud about at the game, besides the fact it was so exciting and you won, when, at the very beginning of the game, you stood as a team while they were calling out names and you went up together. I mean, that symbolic gesture said so much to me about how you feel about each other. So you've learned a lot of lessons, and these are all huge, great life lessons, and you've had a great role model. And I hope that we continue to have such success. And thank you for your work with us.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, we'll introduce, I'll introduce, I'll mention a little bit how great our school system is by bragging about where the seniors are going to school when I introduce them.
Please do that.
Shane Healyan, Shane, you go up and get your hat. He's going to Wentworth. Sean Thomas Chefsky's going to St. Anslums. Peter Shesherig is going to Phillips Exeter Academy. Michael Massey is in at Providence, is currently under contract negotiations with them. Michael Curran has many options and just hasn't made a decision yet. Kevin Hullett is going to Phillips Andover. Johnny Piggott is going to Tilton Academy. And Jeffrey McDonald is going to Deerfield Academy. So you can see that our school system, along with our athletics, was really very good with this class.
Yeah, slow down, she's falling behind on the hats.
That's great.
You know what, they can just grab it, it's adjustable. Yeah.
They'll figure it out.
And we had a junior, Michael Callahan. Junior John Massey. Junior and our goalie, Jack Pernod. Junior Anthony Santaswasso. Sophomore Max Perkel. Sophomore Mark DeCoursey. Sophomore Joe Shesherig. Sophomore Joel Hanley. Sophomore Dara Keneely. Sophomore Cameron Ryan. Sophomore A.J. Liosa. Freshman Tyler Callahan. Freshman Ryan Davies. Freshman Brendan Piggott. Freshman Brendan Jones. Freshman Anthony Missouri. Freshman Andrew Malatesta. Assistant coach and graduate of the Class of '83 and one of our all-time great players, Scott Jones. And then last but not least, I don't even know to call him our trainer or our equipment manager, but Johnny Fredericks has been part of the Arlington High program since 1978. He has been here every year continually since 1978. So last but not least, Johnny Fredericks. So that was, that's our team. Couple of guys are missing. And we'll take those, we'll take the other hats with us.
There's a hat for all of the volunteers that have helped you, helped your program.
We'll grab them all.
Go ahead.
So we still have some exciting events. Thank you. We still got to go to the State House for a day.
Nice.
Oh, great.
We got to float for the parade, and the Red Sox just invited us to join them at home plate to be on it on May 2nd.
All right.
It's all good.
Well, wear your hats.
Yeah, we'll wear our hats to the Red Sox game. Thank you very much.
Wear the swag.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Is there a picture? All right, so we're going to get a picture, right, of the, everybody?
I've already taken quite a few.
Yeah?
Have to back up and get the whole.
You can come, yeah, you want to stand up?
The hats.
Yeah, why don't you guys stand up and then?
I have to.
Okay, all right.
You want them to stand up?
Stand up.
All right. Would you mind standing up for the picture? With the hats, great, awesome.
Come on, coaches.
And the coach, yes.
They were better sitting.
The people in front? People in front could sit.
iPhone?
Yeah, that's the --
Most of everybody else did.
Yeah, I think that works better.
Smile, pretend you're happy.
They're happy.
They were happier at the Garden.
They are happy. They're still glowing.
I'll sit.
Can you see the kids in the bin?
Yeah, I can see all of their faces, yeah.
Okay. I think we're all good. Paul has got to get one more.
All timed, that perfect. Paul, you just blew out the other one.
Thank you so much. I, we really appreciate your coming here tonight. Thank you, thank you.
Classic, shaking the super eight's head.
Well, nice and easy, Peter. You've been a great leader.
I know.
God bless our win.
Thank you. And good luck with the, yeah, it's going to be fun, all the other events.
Thank you.
Have to turn TV on, May 2nd. And we'll see all your white hats there.
Well, you guys must have thought I was --
I know, it must be a surprise. What's happening? What's happening? Good.
None of it got forwarded.
Good, thanks, Peter.
Congrats. Hmm? He's coming, he's here.
Okay, well, he'll be here shortly.
Yeah.
I saw all the chairs when you came in, I said, we only have three or four people.
All right. So then, the next, the next item is public participation. Do we, yes, okay, great.
We're glad that they went first.
They might have stolen some of your thunder, I don't know.
Now the exciting part.
Yes, exactly.
Are you guys speaking as a group?
Well, yeah, actually individually.
Individually, okay. So you want three men each, you're saying?
Hi, my name's Shelley Chabra. I am a resident of Arlington since 2010, have a nine-year-old and a three-year-old currently in the system. I am speaking just as a first-time participant, attended the Vision 2020 education meeting, and wanted to show the effectiveness of that meeting for a first-time participant because there's a lot to learn or a lot to, I guess, dig into to become a more aware and educated resident, especially with younger children in the public school system. So I wanted to be an effective contributor. So as my first time, I thought that the layout and the format of the meeting was actually kind of brilliant. I've never been to a meeting like that where we enter and we get a list of sort of subject matters where we can choose the ones that resonate with us the most, and then go to that table and speak directly to a teacher and kind of get the knowledge dump of what's on their mind and what they're innovating in the classroom. So just that mixture of sitting at a table with parents of all different age groups and kind of feeding off the energy of the teacher directly, it was just a really great first-time experience for me. What was especially great was just the teacher for local government or government studies at the high school, which was very excited to see what she was doing, and actually wished that that happened at elementary and middle school level. So that was, you know, my reflection. I'm really interested in seeing more of this happen. That meeting could have been longer, easily been longer, I would have stayed and learned more and, you know, maybe even have a weekend event like that so that more parents could attend. Because I think there is an eagerness, especially from younger parents, to get more visibility and more sort of direct relatedness to the system. Is this all I have to say?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Bill Fischalis, and I am a parent of a fifth grader at Pierce and an eighth grader at the Audison. And I'm also very pleased to be here tonight to talk about the Innovations in Curriculum Night. That, first of all, I'd like to give some credit to Dr. Cheston and the teachers who helped put it together, that it really was a fantastic evening, and I know a lot of effort went into that. So thank you very much. And I agree with everything that Shelley just said, that of course, there could have been more parents there, but there was a fairly good showing. I would love to see more things like that happening, that it was a great opportunity to see some of the innovation that's happening in the district at all levels. And that was also a wonderful thing about having all levels there as well, and not just focus on the high school, or not just focus middle school or elementary school. So I applaud that as well. And again, I would love to see some more of those things happening and a lot more opportunity for, for parents to see what's going on. So thank you.
Thanks, Bill. So Scott Lever, I have two kids at Bishop, and I also wanted to say thank you to, to Dr. Cheston in particular for organizing and to the curriculum leaders and the other teachers and administrators who participated. It was a great evening, and as a sort of co-participant and co-organizer with Vision 2020, I think the feedback was very consistently strong and positive from the parents, and we're hoping that we'll be able to do this event again with you. So it really represented the school and everything that you're doing very well. I had the chance to attend three sessions, and each one of them was great. I took specific things away from each of the three. So I had a chance to sit with the computer science leader from the high school, Dan, in one session, and I was really impressed with how that program has grown in the, in the last few years and the really innovative and interesting things that they've added to that curriculum. So taking it far beyond a very basic computer science class. So that's very encouraging, and it was also encouraging to hear that Dan's, the demand for Dan's, Dan's courses outstrips the capacity. So that was really fantastic to hear. And he's a real treasure. I also had a chance to sit with the sixth grade social studies teacher from, from the Audison and learn a little bit about the way that she's personalized the classroom, and that was fantastic, absolutely fantastic, and absolutely consistent with the things that we've talked about in Vision 2020. I also had a chance to sit with the math curriculum leader, and the thing I took away from that one was, I'm going to have a lot of catch-up work to do because of the changes in the math curriculum since I went to school. So, and that's a great challenge. So I have a book on order for that. So overall, it was a great night, and we, I think, all wanted to say thank you for doing that and taking the time. We know that the teachers took personal time and, and put a lot of energy into it, and it really showed. A couple other quick points regarding Vision 2020. So there are a couple of follow-up items that are on our agenda, and I think it would be helpful if we could maybe talk about a more fuller debriefing with you. We have made some progress on, on the principles and qualities of what it means to be educated in the community, and we'd like to share that with both the school committee and the school administration and get your feedback and your insight on that. And we also would like to simultaneously reach out to the community and get more input and more support for those ideas as well, so, so to get a broader base of support for that. The other thing which I want to mention is, Dr. Cheston has been generous to, to agree to do a session in June, and we're still deciding a date, June 6th or the 13th, for a special focus on the potential curriculum at Gibbs. So we know that's a work in progress, but it'll be a great chance to have an early conversation about the direction that's heading in. So, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. So our next item on the agenda, we'd like to introduce the candidate for the chief financial officer. Yeah, please come to the table. So there's a microphone there, and so just when you answer, just speak into the mic. So let me talk about the structure of what we should, what we're going to do. I want Dr. Boddy and Dr. Allison Ampe to talk a little bit about the process of, that the, the committee that was making the selection, what they went through, and, and then we're just going to go around and have each school committee member ask questions. Great, so, Dr. Boddy?
We, we posted the position, and soon after that, we put together a, a search committee, which I think is important to, to mention, at least the position titles of the people that were on the committee, because it was a large committee and representing a lot of the people that the CFO would be interacting with on a regular basis. In addition to myself, as superintendent, we had Dr. Allison Ampe as representing the school committee. We had the controller for the town, the deputy town manager, the chair of the finance committee, payroll manager, our director of HR, the director of special education, the district's director of grants and Title I, consultant to the business office who is a former CFO herself, the director of technology for town and schools, and the director of facilities for town and schools. So it's a fairly, a large group representing all of some of the key functions that make this, both town and school work so well. We, we received a number of applications, and one of the things that I don't think that some people understand properly from the business world is that we are required to have, a candidate is required to have certification through the Department of Education. So basically, there became two, two groups of candidates, those that did have certification and those that did not. And we only went forward with those that were. There was also some pre-reference checking, and we were ready to interview four candidates right just about the time we were beginning the interviews. One of the candidates notified us that he had accepted another position. So we had three candidates, all of which were very skilled, terrific backgrounds, I think presented very well to the committee. And Dr. Allison Ampe can talk a little bit more about that too and, and the process. But, you know, we were very fortunate to have some very good candidates. And tonight, we're presenting Mr. Denizio as a, as a, as a recommendation for this position.
So, I don't want to say too much because I'm a little bit confused about what I can say and what I can't say to preserve confidentiality, but it was, it was a large group, it was very congenial. We had a list of questions that we went through for each candidate. I thought they were going to be here, but I don't see them.
They are. Oh, they're in front of me.
But we, we would go around Robin's style, and each candidate was asked the same questions. And I think the questions were good ones. There were certain ones which made it really clear which directions that we wanted to go. And I'm not sure what else I can say without.
Just, I guess, a little bit about the process. So when did you guys start the process and when?
Let Mr. Spiegel speak to that.
Oh, just approximately, sorry.
The position was posted a couple months ago on School Spring, and I can actually tell you the exact day in a minute. So, you know, in a couple months' time, you know, when Ms. Johnson had announced that she was leaving, soon after that, we, we moved to, to post it. It was actually posted on School Spring on January 20th.
Okay.
So, you know, it's been a couple months since it was posted and taking time to get applications in and then figure out how, put the committee together and go through the candidates and decide who to bring in for interviews and schedule that, so.
So actually, just a question, was everybody able to meet with all the top candidates or is that, because it's such a large group? That's great, yeah.
Yes.
And then there was a vote taken, I assume, right?
In addition to that, Dr. Allison, Ampe also went through all of the, read all of the applications as we did as well. So she saw all of the candidates who had applied for the position.
Yeah, I read both stacks and actually found one that was in the not qualified and belonged in the qualified, so pushed that one through and, and stuff, so.
Okay, thanks. All right, so I'm going to actually just, we're going to go down the row, and I'm going to actually start with Mr. Carden.
First.
Yes.
Okay, so, one of the things that I'm interested in --
Oh, we did, I'm sorry. I, I just realized that we actually, we intended for you to make a statement first before we do questions. If that's okay.
You have time to think.
I just, I just, so now you have time to think. Sorry. Would you, would you mind just telling us a little bit about your background, what attracted you to Arlington, you know, what you are excited about, the position, stuff like that?
Sure. Thank you, thank you for having me. So currently, I'm in, I work in Winchester as the director of finance for the Winchester Public Schools, similar role. And before that, I was doing the same in Salem, and that was my first job on this, on the school side of municipal. Before that, I had worked in Woburn as the deputy auditor, budget manager for the city of Woburn. And while I was doing that, I worked on a bunch of projects with the school business manager or assistant, assistant superintendent of finance in, in Woburn. And short, in, in short order, I realized that, that was the place to be if you were going to work in, in municipal. You know, that's where all the exciting stuff was happening. So I then got certified and, and went over, and then started looking for a school business manager job. So that's what attracted me to this field. What attracted me to Arlington was when I saw the job posted, I remember Tony Mertz, who's here now helping, helping you guys out, had told me, when this comes up, you should look at it. I think it'd be a good match, and it's, it's a, it's a good spot. You know, that piqued my interest. I looked at it a little bit, and I thought, jeez, it's a, you know, it's a little bigger, it's got more buildings, it's, you know, more kids, a bigger budget, it's nice and close to home, I just live a couple towns away. So that's, that's really what piqued my interest, and as I dug a little deeper and talked to some more people and did some more research, I saw what an exciting time it is for the Arlington Public Schools with, with everything going on and the enrollment growth, the amazing enrollment growth you've had, and, and the ongoing planned and potential building projects that are coming up. You know, has the budget complexities that, that we, every town seems to have, but that's, that's what's the exciting stuff. And as I went through the, that's what got me to go to, to think about Arlington, and as I went through the process, you know, it really, it really was clear that Arlington was the place to be for me. It matched my skill set, I think, perfectly with having worked on complex budgets and cash-strapped places and, and extensive work in building projects, that, that's really what solidified it for Arlington for me.
Thanks. Okay, now, Mr. Carden.
All right, so my background, before I went back to law school, I was a management and budget analyst for the federal government. So part of what I had to do, and what I think is partly missing from what we've done in, in Arlington, is, is sort of analyze trends and data. And we have lots of data about, you know, fortunately, one of, one of the strengths of our prior CFO was generating lots of, of data about the budget in, in more detail than, than a lot of communities provide. But what was missing was sort of an, an analysis of the data and, and, you know, where we're spending and why, and how we compare to other towns and things like that. So that's something that I'm interested in doing more of, and I was wondering if that's something you've done in the past or something you feel qualified to do or having your, your staff do. It's not necessarily something the CFO needs to be bogged down with, but something that the CFO should direct.
Sure. So, a little bit, not, not, not a lot of, of experience doing that, but certainly the, you know, it's in the skill set. I think the important thing when you do that, and when we have done a little bit of that in the places I've been, was more of the, we spend this much more on this category, really, why? And, you know, maybe it's appropriate, maybe it isn't, and sometimes when something catches your eye like that and why. And sometimes when something catches your eye like that and why, you know, for instance, where I am with busing, you, you would think it's, it shouldn't be as expensive as it is, as small as it is, but, you know, when you, when you look at it and you, and it catches your eye and then you dig down a little deeper and understand why that's the case, you feel more comfortable that, okay, we're spending in these areas, but it's, and I think it's important to compare to other places, but to really compare to yourself. Do we really need to be doing this? Sometimes there is a good reason why we spend more than somebody else on something. So, not a, not a ton of experience doing it, but a little bit and feel comfortable that.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
I wonder if you could tell people about your approach to budgeting, the zero base?
Sure. So, I, my approach is always well, well, after you, you find out what the approach of the committee and the superintendent is, but rough to me, I like to start as close to zero base as possible, especially, especially someone coming new into a position, it's very helpful for that person to, to get to know the who's and whys of, of each of the budget lines. I think it's important for, to go through the exercise for, for everybody to, to see really in detail what you're spending and the why, just, just like we just talked about. Oftentimes, you, you start with all intentions of doing that and you stray a little bit, which, you know, on the personnel side might be okay, but on the expense side, maybe you wanna stay the, stay the course a little bit. So it's, it's getting, so my approach is to stay the course as much as you can, but be able to work with everybody to make sure the process is moving forward and we're, we're getting the information we need and that it's the information that the committee wants, superintendent wants, that, that's best for everybody, that's the shit'em makers.
Mr. Schliffman.
It's good to meet you. I know that Winchester is just completing their high school project. We're entering the feasibility study right now. Could you tell us what you think we have to look forward to in the process of rebuilding this building? What your role in this would likely be vis-à-vis your experience in Winchester and maybe what a timeline to completion might be?
Sure. So, what you have to look forward to is, is, you know, the, the fun part of feasibility is, which you probably have the same problem we had, is where do you put it? Where do you put the building? And you'll probably do what we did and look at a lot of places and realize it's gotta go where it is and how, how can we do that? And that typically comes with a phased, occupied renovation, which sounds as complicated as it is. And I think what I could bring in, to the table for that is, having been through it, the lessons learned and what to think of ahead of time. And just how to, you know, when we should be thinking of logistical things or, you know, swing space items, I think, I think I could help in that area. Timeline, looking at the, I think you have four separate buildings here and if you, if it was phased, occupied, reno with, I'm sure, an addition, you, I think you'd probably be looking at four phases to it or maybe five. So that could be six years, maybe?
Thank you.
Ms. Darks?
No questions.
Mr. Hainer.
Could you tell us your background and plans for Munis?
So, I'm glad someone asked that question. So I've got to talk about Munis a lot in my few hours I've spent here, so, like that. I have extensive background in Munis since they used it in each of the three places I worked. And for, for me, one of the benefits that I have is from working on both sides, on, you know, the city side and on the school side, to being able to be more involved in, in setup and rights and privileges on the city side and, you know, building account structure and, and things like that. And then on the school side with reporting, I, I do a lot of professional development or, or training of our clerical staff and principals and directors on how to produce reports, the reports that they need, you know, so, and they're all different. Some may have, some may want a detailed report that has all the info in it, some may want a snapshot, some may just want account by account with a bottom line. And they're all pretty easy to do at when you know how you do, how to do it. So I think with Munis, we talked a little bit here about some of the possible changes to make here with encumbering payroll, with it being such a large part of every school budget, that that's, I think, necessary to make sure you're encumbering payroll. That's a process I've been through twice from, you know, we, we do it now, but from start to finish. I think I could really help with that.
May I follow up with that, just real quick?
Well, we're gonna do another round.
Okay, fine.
Okay, Mr. Thielman.
So, thanks very much and welcome. My, my question is, we had a, our CFO, our previous CFO did a great job. One issue she brought up was the number of meetings with town committees, town bodies and that sort of thing. I just wanna see if you've given some thought to that, if that works within your schedule.
I appreciate the question and I think the superintendent and I had a long conversation about that and was made very clear the expectations of this position and I'm well aware of that.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, sort of related, so the CFO position is a unique position because you have to manage a lot of different relationships, right? So there's these cross relationships with town officials and town staff. You're managing up with, you know, you're managing down. So if you can just talk a little bit about your management style.
Sure. So I, I think another unique opportunity I had in, in all three places I went, there was a strange relationship between at least one department and the department I went to work for. So, being able to, to help establish, rebuild or maintain relationships, I think is a, is a pretty good strength of mine. Working my, for my management style, I think it's, you know, can be summed up in one word, collaborative. I'm, you know, always wanna hear from as many people as possible. I think that's the only way to make the right decisions and, and, in the end, do what's right for kids, which is what we all wanna do. I think I'm very easily approachable, you know, I think I'll, you know, if I keep going, it'll sound like the buzzwords that you just read off the card.
They have meaning, but I know, they get overused. All right, we're gonna do another round. You don't have to ask another question, but we're just gonna start. Mr. Carden?
Sure. I guess, as far as career progression, this, this position, while it's a different community, a slightly larger community, is not a whole lot different from your, your current position. So I guess, I'm wondering where you see yourself going? Do you, do you envision, you know, trying to get more educational experience and becoming more of a general assistant superintendent or is your heart set on, on staying the numbers guy? What, what, what sort of drives this, your, your long-term plans?
I think the, this position fits my skill set and that's really what I like to do. I think, I think coming here will allow to, to maybe be more strategic in the approach and, and a little bit less hands-on to some degree, just with it being a larger district, you can't just have one person doing all that. I, you know, I see myself being in this position, you know, for the long term, being a business manager, CFO, that sort of thing. I don't have any aspirations for being superintendent, having worked, worked for five of them, I see how hard their job is.
Thanks. Dr. Allison Ampe?
I wonder if you could talk about your approach to budgeting for special education?
For special ed, bless you. Yeah, so I, I, I think I talked about this in our interview about how special ed budgeting process never ends, you know, from, from preparing, presenting and then the hard part, maintaining. It's, you know, it's a, it's a 18-month cycle we, we talk about, or 18-month marathon. I think it's the most volatile, obviously, for, for, of budget lines, but I think our approach is to be as conservative as you can when you're predicting expenses and staffing and, and especially with out-of-district placements and transportation. To be as conservative as you can, but you still have to be realistic and know that there's not an endless supply of resources. And I, I think it works well to, we, I spend a lot of time with the special ed director and her, and her staff, getting into staffing about caseloads and, and TAs and probably more than they'd like me to get involved and who's attached to an IEP and why and, but it's, it's mostly just to make sure that we're, we're not missing anything and, and we're gonna have the, the fewest amount of things prop, crop up on us throughout the year.
Thank you. Mr. Schliffman.
I noticed in your resume and application, you were talking about your skill set in terms of managing the SIS. You're an Aspen guy, right? And you're talking about Munis. And one of the issues that we have in town is sort of the integration of, of, of the finance operations on the town side and the school side. And so there are all these natural barriers to information which tend to crop up. How do you envision sort of putting all this together, at least on our side of the street in terms of having an integrated relationship between RSIS and Munis and town side stuff and the other things we need to do?
So I, I, I think that the, the town side Munis and school side Munis, it's critical for them to be integrated, for everybody to, you know, to have, have confidence in their, in their reports they're getting are accurate, you know, coming from one place and, and having the town side be able to have access and not have to ask and, and be able to keep an eye, you know, see what's reporting that they need. As, as far as SIS for, for staffing with, with Munis, I haven't had integrated staffing from, from SIS to Munis in any of the districts I've been in. I've mostly, mostly been, you know, Munis to Excel, Excel to Munis. I think works well. And we have had, I've had a little bit of experience with time and attendance, integration, not, not great experience, but, but some experience. So I, I think more crucial, Munis to Munis, town and, and school and have experience with that, not so much on the SIS to Munis side, but I think can be done. I'm just not sure how crucial that is.
So which platform are you doing your state reporting in Winchester?
So we, so state reporting for, on the SIM stuff is, is from Aspen.
Ms. Darks?
I'm all set.
Okay. Mr. Hainer.
How would you feel about teaching the school committee member about Munis?
Anytime.
Thank you.
Mr. Thielman.
I think all my questions have been answered.
And I just wanna emphasize, which I think Mr. Carden did, is that in the next few years, it is gonna be really important that we tell a story about our budget. You know, budgets really reflect our values, they also reflect our constraints, our limitations, you know, what we can and can't do. And I think we've done a better job over the last few years of getting that story across, but I think that's gonna be even more crucial in the next few years, sort of, to tell that story. So, that's more of a statement, I'm sorry.
I agree.
Good. Yeah, Mr. Thielman?
So I move that we select John D'Nizio as, did I pronounce it right, John?
Yes.
John D'Nizio as our chief financial officer and that we enter into...
Negotiations.
Contract negotiations.
Contract negotiations later after the, and close of the regular business tonight or?
We enter negotiations.
Negotiations.
Well, actually, the question is, we authorize, we authorize the superintendent to enter into negotiations.
Very good.
I'll second that motion.
Right, thank you for the language.
Okay. And I don't think we have specified a time. Mr. Schliffman.
I'm very pleased to support this nomination. Obviously, when you have a candidate coming from a neighboring community, you get a lot of information about a candidate. And everything that I've heard about Mr. D'Nizio is of a very highly competent administrator who develops good personal relationships with, with other folks in town and within the school department. His answer to the night meeting question was, was music to our ears and sort, indicates an understanding of the kind of community we are and, and a willingness to play in a community that thrives on citizen involvement. I envision him having a long and successful career with us.
Mr. Hainer.
I support you and I really appreciate what you've done and what we're hoping you're going to do and looking forward to working with you. But I would like to go on record that the negotiations is not just an approval part of the school committee, it's an active part of the school committee. So I think, I, I would feel more comfortable in bifurcating this and going forward with the nomination and potentially further discussion on the negotiations. So I offer that as an amendment.
I'm actually, I'm unclear about, can you just spell out what you?
What I'm asking is to separate this, two parts of this motion. One is to nominate for approval. The second part is to enter into negotiations. I'd, I'd ask the committee, as an amendment, to separate the two and vote, two, two motions, if you would.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table, but we're gonna consider that one as well?
I can reword it. We're gonna do that with a piece of...
Fine, you can withdraw, just reword it.
But I'm, actually, I'm, I'm, I'm clear because what happened, to approve it but not to go into negotiations would be weird.
No, no. I, I, I wanna discuss the process of negotiation. I'm, I support the nomination, I support the hiring, I support the concept of negotiations, but the process right now is just the superintendent.
Oh.
That's my issue. So I wanna discuss that part of it, that's all.
Okay. So do you wanna withdraw your motion? Do you want?
Redo it.
No.
That, that's fine. I mean, what, Paul, do you want, what do you?
Well, no, here's the question, would you reread the motion, please?
On that I have, it moves that the school committee accepts the recommendation of John as the CFO and authorizes the superintendent to enter negotiations.
Right.
Okay. Yeah. I...
I, yeah.
If I may, I find that limiting, that's all.
Well, okay.
Okay, I, okay, I think I understand why you're finding it limiting in that the agency is actually in charge of the negotiations because it's our position would be the school committee.
Okay, so we can, right, so there was actually some discussion, I mean, we can authorize someone, myself or someone in the school committee said.
And we can say authorize, I mean, the thing is, is that, you know...
Welcome to the show.
We're collegial, but we do...
Might I suggest we just accept, go for the nomination and then can, and get the guy off the hook for that part of it?
Then we can talk.
And then we can talk.
So I'm gonna withdraw the motion, so I'm gonna move that we, withdraw the motion, I'm gonna move that we hire John D'Nizio as our chief financial officer.
That we support the rec, we support the successful negotiations. So we support the recommendation.
Yes, and I will second that.
The committee, okay.
I will second that.
I'll, I'll write it later.
Okay, to approve the hire subject to successful negotiation.
Yeah, approve the hire subject to successful negotiation.
And put his name in it.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, okay.
Go to the votes first.
Okay, so, so let's, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so that's unanimous. Okay, so now we have, need a second motion, right?
No, I think that we're, we're subject to negotiations.
Subject to negotiations.
We can discuss that.
Okay, I misunderstood, I misunderstood, okay.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, exactly, okay, I misunderstood the constraint, okay. Great.
Because obviously, if we're going to negotiations with a candidate, we don't wanna discuss the negotiations.
I'd like to ask one more question. Any second thoughts after what you've just addressed?
No, no, we're, we're a good group. We just, we like to talk, we like to talk.
I mean, you gotta be unanimous, folks, so life is good.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Poor guy.
Okay.
We should've done that first before we asked him.
So, all right, so the next item, we, looking at the approval of the principal gives job description, this is the one that came before us last time, it's now been amended. And so we wanna take a look at it and see if there's any other further concerns. Mr. Hainer.
Just a point at the, dealing with the, the transition part for the person, I think it's important for us to, to realize that the stipend, it needs a job description for that stipend, that's all. What would be expected of this person during the... What would be expected of this person during the year and things of that nature? Before we, as we, and I would ask the job description and the recommended amount for us to, to ponder. May I continue?
Yeah.
Under qualifications, my question, I guess, is to the superintendent, because the superintendent, our designees are going to be, these qualifications, are all these qualifications to be a candidate? Are some, is, do you see flexibility? And if so, could you identify those? And I, that may not
The, the answer is yes. I mean, there's preferences, but it, it'll depend upon who applies.
I
We certainly want to see some teaching experience.
Right, the first one, a master's degree or higher from an accredited college, I don't see that much flexibility in that as far as administration and things of that nature.
But you have to have a master's degree to be an administrator.
Right, okay. Fine, so that, that wouldn't be. Down number four, previous administrative experience required, is there a minimum? Do you have a minimum, one year, five years?
No, we did not put a minimum in there.
I know you didn't, I'm asking, I'm trying to understand, to me, that's very open-ended. Do you have a minimum in your head?
Everybody that would be, well, I shouldn't say that, I don't know who will apply, but my assumption is that it would be a current administrator in the district applying, so it would have administrative experience.
And my last issue is down under terms of employment. I have no problem with the concept of 12-month position, but five weeks vacation, I know that's standard for, right now, but that, to me, belongs in a contract, not in a job description necessarily. Vacation and holiday, being specific of five weeks, that's my opinion, that I don't see that as a deal breaker.
It is part, no, it is part of contract negotiations, yes.
Right, and I'm just saying, in the job description, 12-month position should be a job description, specifics on, on things like that, I don't think should belong in a job, that's my opinion.
That's, in, in fact, I don't think that we've done that before, has put benefits
Yeah, I mean, I usually would say on school spring posting, you know, competitive benefits or something like that.
That, that
That's how we say it.
That, to me, belongs in the job description, not the specificity, that's all.
Right.
Thank you.
No, I agree.
That's good, I agree.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Comments, questions, concerns? Mr. Schlickman.
Yeah, where are we on the Odison search?
Well, let's get through this first and then
No, 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 no.
Why?
No, the reason why is that I, I expressed at the previous meeting that I wasn't ready to move forward here without really being firm on the Odison search. So that's why I'm asking, how's, how's the Odison search?
We are continuing the search, is the short answer to, to that. We do not have three candidates that we've put forward. That has been how we've done principal searches, and there's good reasons for it. Even just seeing with the CFO, things can change, and it has happened in past searches in the district where we've had people withdraw for personal reasons, for taking another position. And so we, when we go forward into a finalist, in, in every principal job that we've, we've advertised and done searches for, we have three candidates, we do not have three. We are continuing to search, it's open-ended, we haven't, we never put a closing date on, on school spring. And I believe that there are another round of interviews coming up in the next week or so.
Okay. So I move approval of the Gibbs' principal job description.
Second.
Okay. Okay, so move by Mr. Hayner, further discussion, I know you're right by
I, I'll abstain in that I don't think we're ready to go forward if we don't have the Odison resolved.
Got it. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Abstained? Okay, so two abstentions, Mr. Hayner, Mr. Schlickman, everyone else in favor. And I should take the opportunity to welcome Julian Keys, our AIA rep, sorry, we didn't do that earlier. Welcome. Okay, so, so the next item on the agenda, the director of guidance job description.
All right, so this is an updated and new kind of job description we've had in the past, directors of guidance and wellness, and the focus of this position would be obviously guidance services in the district, guidance counseling, and all other types of counseling, social, emotional, supervising social workers, adjustment counselors, really leading district effort in conjunction with other professionals, in conjunction with the superintendent, assistant superintendent, director of special ed, would be heavily involved in working with this individual on the areas of social, emotional learning, which is a big focus of the district and all, our teachers and, and social workers, guidance counselors, psychologists, people in the district who work on this, and to really put together a cohesive curriculum on social, emotional learning and continue what we've, what we've already started, some good work in the district. This position would also be someone who would have sort of the leadership expertise to lead the department, both the, you know, guidance department in the high school and middle school, and lead social work, social workers in the district and really be able to, to lead and guide professional development activities for these groups and to supervise them in, and evaluate them, and which is really something that we're looking for, someone with that kind of expertise to do, because we have in the past couple of years been very lean in this area, we have not had, you know, to, because of, you know, budget constraints and, and other reasons, we've, principals, assistant principals have taken up the, the duty of supervising, evaluating guidance counselors in the district, and they've done a good job doing that, but we really are looking to move, move this, this area forward and have someone with the, the more subject matter expertise to evaluate these people and to lead the, the initiatives.
Can, can you give me a sense, are other districts of our size, do they have this position? Are we a leader in this? Are we behind in this?
Kathy and Laura might know more than I do about that, but
Well, first of all, we had this position.
Right, right.
What we've done is we've reframed it to include SEL. I think that, I know, for example, one of the leaders in this area of SEL education and reading, and yes, they do have, in that district, they have somebody that's just simply SEL and not responsible for guidance. I think that every district tries to do a hybrid, and which is exactly what we're doing this year, we have people from different schools, our director of special ed, another special education coordinator, principal, we have people that are coming together to do this work, and it, but each of them have their own jobs, which are in themselves fairly intense and time-consuming positions. So what we need is someone that's going to coordinate that effort, and we have not had a director of guidance for a number of years now, and it is something that we believe that we need to, to put in again. Our, our numbers are growing, and the one thing you can see when you do an analysis of growth, while our enrollment is growing, our number of teachers are growing, the number of administrators have not.
All right, questions, comments? Mr. Carton.
Yes, so I have no doubt that, of the need for the position, but just a, a question on the, the description. So the social workers are primarily, or a large portion of their time is IEP-driven, special education. So I don't see anything in here about the relationship with the director of special ed and, and how the director of special ed will have some supervision of the social workers or how all that would, would work.
Well, I'm not sure that this is all social workers in the district. I, I think that your point is well-taken. Currently, at the elementary level, there's a hybrid. The school social worker, who also works with gen ed students as well as special education students, is supervised by the principal, whereas program social workers are, are supervised by a coordinator in special education. And we have a sort of a similar kind of hybrid situation at the secondary level. I think the intent of this, and there may be, may be some crossover, but certainly the social workers who have, have both responsibilities. I think this is something that we will work out, and in fact, one of the things that happens when we set up our evaluations, we frequently have two evaluators, a primary and a secondary, and I suspect that that kind of relationship will occur here, because there's people in content areas we want to help supervise, and we also want the people working closely with them. At, at the elementary level, the principal works every day with the social workers, so perhaps that person is a, the principal one, and those are things that we'll, we'll figure out. I don't think we have it in black and white right now.
Great. Ms. Elmer has spoken to me about this, she does want to be heavily involved with this position. I, you know, in terms of whether, you know, she would be, we, we have it in the job description that the assistant superintendent is the supervisor, because the assistant superintendent, you know, really supervises all, all the curriculum leaders in the district, and what, other districts have a model where they have a director of student support services, where this might fall under that, and if, you know, if we had to, we, we don't have that model here, where if we did, then that director could supervise this, but that may be something to consider in the future. But she would be, and is interested in being heavily involved and, and work with whoever takes this position to coordinate social workers and social, emotional learning.
Great, thank you.
Oh, actually, Ms. Keys?
I just
Oh, yes, of course.
I'm sorry to interrupt, I do have a question.
No, please.
A lot of our students who are on 504s are supervised by guidance counselors directly, and there is a lot of work sort of coordinating, particularly transitions for students who are on 504s. Would coordinating all of that be something that would fall under this leadership position as well?
Uh, do you want to?
Yeah, I'm, I'm 504 coordination for the district, just comes out of my office.
Okay.
And right now, this is not one of the job, on the job responsibilities for this individual, even though I don't supervise those folks, if there's a problem with 504, the team and the parent disagrees for whatever reason, then it can be appealed to my office. So that's how it's handled right now.
Again, it's, it's not so black and white, the, the person here probably would be more on the hands as a, as a consultant, somebody that would support guidance counselors who are involved in that. But at the same time, then, there is somebody who is the coordinator for the district. We actually, you know, this is something that we debated as to whether this person would take this on, and, and it's very possible that this could grow to that. We had some concern that we'd not overload this job position right at the onset, and we'll just see how, as you know only too well, we, we always reevaluating and, and adjusting as, as circumstances dictate.
Dr. Allison Eppi.
Two questions. First, who does the evaluations right now for the people that would now later be done by the director of guidance? I'm wondering whose loads are being lightened?
So it's, one of the deans at the high school is evaluating the guidance counselors at the high school, one of the assistant principals at the middle school is evaluating the guidance counselors at the middle school, and then the principals are evaluating the social workers in their building, and then, as Dr. Bodie said, the guidance, the special ed coordinators are evaluating the special ed social workers in their buildings, or the buildings that they, they have oversight for. So I don't know if I'm missing anybody who is evaluating. So we would take those evaluation load, that part of the evaluation loads off of the dean and the assistant principal, and really that, this person would be primary for the guidance counselors in both high school and middle school. And then we'd work, figure it out as, you know, shared evaluation responsibility for the social workers and the building-based social workers, I think.
We also, as I said, we have this primary and secondary, it's very, while they may have the primary, I think that we also want assistant principals and principals to be part of the evaluation system for everybody in the building, so they may take on an observation. And, and this is something that we've worked with the union, laying this out, so it's very clear at the beginning of the year exactly who's being supervised and who's the secondary, and it's, it's quite, it's quite systematic.
Then my other question was whether, in their performance responsibilities, I'm wondering if there's any point to having some mention made of applying for grants or, or anything, because that's, this area, I mean, the social mission, it seems to be right now where a lot of grants
Right.
are, and just, it seems like that would be something that this person would be in a really good position, I mean, with the knowledge base that you're asking for, would be in a really good position to do that. So that was just a thought.
When we've gone for grants, generally, the first person they'll talk to is Julie Dunn, who is our, among her many titles, that's her role, and, and when we've gone for very big grants and we've been quite successful, for example, Project Success, that, that would pretty much qualify as an SEL grant. That was, involved lots of people working on that grant, but then it's one person has to have primary responsibility, and that's usually Julie.
Other questions, comments? Mr. Hayner?
Yes. Up at the, under the qualifications, I'm concerned of the potential of a person coming on board that has a master's in education and then going down further possesses a, a DESI license as a supervisor and a director, wouldn't have the basic qualifications. Those are two of the things that you have. In other words, I could come in with a master's in education, not say, not related to the issue here, and be qualified under number one and number two, have a license as a supervisor, director, without specifying in the year. I'm just concerned about that, I'm sharing that with you. Up above, and number one, it says related field, could that be somebody that had speech pathology, a master's in speech or something like that?
It's possible.
I'm, I'm just nervous with such broad terms, that's all.
I think when we put the qualifications, we're looking at the totality of the qualifications, and so, you know, if you took an ideal candidate, and I don't know, I mean, would have, you know, a master's in education counseling or, or social work and have worked as a social worker or guidance counselor in a school district for several years, gotten administrator license, I mean, those kinds of, that progression is what we're looking for.
I appreciate that, I'm just looking, I'm not asking you to write such a job description you'd have the purest person come in, but some of the broader terms, you're going to end up getting people that you have to take the time, read it and say, they don't make it. That's all I'm saying, under related fields.
You mean that they wouldn't apply for it?
No, they would apply, but in reality, a degree in education, a degree in supervision that doesn't
I suspect that always happens, no matter what.
Right, but I'm, I'm just, okay. Down under number seven, demonstrated in-depth knowledge of social and emotional learning. I had to get to number seven to get to the emotional part, the social and emotional part. The emphasis is mainly on guidance and things of that nature, up to there point. And then number 10 is the next one, social and emotional learning. My biggest concern is asking this person to do all of this, and including supervision of clerical people as well, in a 205-day part.
Well, there's only two clerical people who would be involved, there's one
I just added that.
Yeah.
Even if you took those out.
Yeah.
This is not only an awful lot of work, but to me, the social and emotional part should be, in my mind, the driving factor going forward right now. This is a major concern in dealing with our children at all grade levels and stuff, and 205 days, I think this should be a year-round job, especially with the part where we're talking about having this person provide program, research and provide programs and provide PD and all sorts of things to build these programs and make them work. I think this is asking an awful lot, and I'd be very concerned. If we go forward with the 205-day position, I would ask us at this time next year to truly evaluate this and find out if we've made the progress and, and the help with the kids that we, we're trying to deal with in this.
Mr. Schlickman.
Second meeting in a row where we're making sausage at the table. It would be my recommendation for any future job descriptions, we run it through subcommittee first.
Fine.
I just have, there's just a, a typo in here, so it's where the districts focus on college and career readiness.
So, what number is that?
This is in the job, job goals.
The job goals.
Between district, focus and college. Yes.
So I mean, I'm comfortable with this job description, and I'm comfortable approving it tonight. I think the district can take the comments that were made and improve it.
I think the district can take the comments that were made and improve it, but I think it's, I think it's, for me, it's approval-ready. I don't, I don't really want to spend more time on this. So I'm going to move we approve the job description for director of guidance, social emotional learning.
Seconded by Dr. Allison Anpe. Okay, more discussion, ready to vote? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Aye opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So it's six to one? Okay, six to one. Okay, next item, hey, we're ahead of schedule.
Don't say that.
Is that going to jinx it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like, no one in January should say something like, oh, the snow renewal budget is doing well. Because every time someone makes that comment, two weeks later, we get slammed.
Snow tomorrow.
So no one should ever make that comment.
You've got to say it out loud, or it won't happen.
Okay, so the next item in agenda, I just wanted to, we want to have a more robust discussion, it seemed like, last time, on the town warrant article to make this a sanctuary town or a trust fund town. There's different languages used that I don't-
Not a trust fund.
No, not trust fund.
I'm all for that.
So trust act town. Trust act town. Sorry, you're right. Trust act town. And I understand this distinction. I don't know the distinction, maybe someone else does. But, but just seemed like there was a desire to have a more robust conversation, so we put it on the agenda tonight. Have that conversation.
Because it was brought up as one of the articles for our discussion.
Do we think we should vote on it?
There seemed to be, there was a desire to talk about this. So I wanted to put it on, and we decided, wasn't on the agenda last time that we should put on-
There was also a, I don't know whether consensus, but discussion whether the school committee would actually come with, look at policies in other districts and stuff, and devise a policy for our own. So that's what brought in the discussion.
All right, so actually, there are two sort of issues here, right? So one issue is, what is our reaction to what's going on at town meeting and the thing that town meeting is going to vote on, right? And then the second question is, do we as a school committee want to take any action via resolution, via policy change, to show our students that they are safe and supported? So I think those are sort of two questions. They're related, but, yeah. Let me get Dr. Allison Anpe.
I had thought that this was going to go to policy. I was confused.
Me too.
So there are two things. It was going to go to policy, policy hasn't met yet. And so why, so I thought, and there was a desire to have a discussion last time, which we said, let's table it to this time. So that's why we put it on the agenda. But, but you're absolutely right, the policy was going to look at, they haven't met yet. So I thought maybe we can give guidance to policy if we want to. Yes, Mr. Hainer.
You all got a copy at the end of the notice on the trust resolution. At the bottom of the trust resolution, there is a piece, it ends, "Be it further resolved, that nothing in this resolution shall be construed to prohibit any town agency or department from providing another law or enforcement agency information required to be provided by a state or federal law, including U.S. Code 8, U.S. Code, Section 1373." That code specifically says all the things it does not require. My feeling is every time I've communicated with the police, and I'll get to the education part of it, the police department has stated that we, they are already, they do absolutely nothing beyond what this, the resolution is going to provide. The resolution has no enforcement capability. The police do not give out free information on anybody, including immigrants or any non-citizens. The school side, there are massive state regulations and laws prohibiting the dissemination of any records about any student or their family without a warrant. Now, if somebody wants to, and I'm not trying to be sarcastic, and I apologize to anybody that takes offense to this, it's not my intent. This country has a history about not obeying laws at the beginning of our country because they felt that they, civil disobedience. This resolution does not suggest that. If a, somebody comes to the police department and asks for copies of existing records, they don't have to give them without a warrant. We don't give anything without a warrant. So my concern is the possibility, as far-fetched as it might be, federal money being denied us because we've put a label on us. That's my concern.
Mr. Schlickman.
There's every possibility that federal money is going to evaporate, no matter what we do. Every time I turn around, there's a new budget proposal to starve cities and towns and social programs. This is a statement of what we do now. This is a statement of what our police department is doing right now. And the resolution that's coming before town meeting does talk about the police department. Now, the latest statement out of the Trump administration has been that they will go after certain public safety grants that may or may not exist anyway. The arguments that were made in public were that we're about to build a new high school, and we wouldn't want to lose federal money, well, there's no federal money there. But the most important thing, I think, for us is our obligation to keep our students safe. And not only is it an obligation to keep our students safe, but it's an obligation for us to communicate to all members of our community that we are intent on keeping them safe. The real issue before us, which has been stated on the other side of the street, is that the police department wants to maintain an environment in which people can talk to them without any fear. ICE went in today in Lawrence and arrested people who were coming for routine interviews in the immigration office. It's getting nutty out there. We don't do business that way. The biggest threat in terms of violence in any community such as this is usually a domestic incident or an incident involving somebody you know. And somebody who is worried about immigration may not take the steps to protect themselves or their family. This is a common sense, public safety resolution that not only expresses what we're doing, but it also tells each and every one of our neighbors that we're going to be standing with them. As a town meeting member, I intend to vote for this because the question of what happens to the schools if we adopt this resolution and the Trump administration somehow comes after our money, I think is really a non-issue for a couple of reasons. First of all, any federal money we get is being dispensed by the state. We don't get the money directly from the federal government. Secondly, if the, if the national administration is going after communities, they're going to be going after far bigger communities with a far bigger budget impact than us. And there's going to be a lot of effort out there to defend the larger communities with a larger share of state and federal funding in case of a problem. I think that because the question has been put before us, what happens to the schools if this resolution is adopted, I think that puts us in a position where we should be ready in town meeting to answer the question if it comes about. Now, I've read the proposed resolution by the selectmen. This is not a radical resolution. It's basically a statement of what we're already doing and a statement to our community that we are going to stand by you and we're going to protect you. For that reason, I'd like to move that the school committee endorse the selectmen's recommended vote under this article.
Second.
More comments? Mr. Carden.
Thank you. So as a town meeting member, I definitely will support this resolution, but it doesn't address the schools whatsoever, and I don't think we should set the precedent of voting on matters that really have no direct relationship to the schools.
Excuse me, the second to last piece says, "Be it further resolved, the town meeting supports and encourages each town, department, and official from refusing to gather or disseminate information." We are part of that, that part of the resolution, so it does affect us.
So, so to Mr. Carden's point, I think one of the things that people in the community have seen, it's a seen neighboring communities, school departments, school administration, and school committees come out with very strong statements showing that they support children, showing that, saying that children are safe in their communities. And I think there's a little bit of antiness, and why, why has Arlington not done that? With all these other towns nearby have done a statement like that? So, so this is why we thought at one point to send it to policy. It's not clear, I mean, now that we're changing over, I'm not sure when policy's meeting next. So the question is whether we want to craft a statement as a school committee.
We have a motion on the floor.
Yeah.
We've got to deal with that.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Schlickman. We have a motion on the floor.
To the chair's point, that yes, I mean, the Somerville resolution and the attached policy is something that requires more deliberation, and that should go to a policy committee when we reconstitute ourselves. But I think that in light of the fact that this resolution is before town meeting and we know what it is, I think it's certainly within our domain to voice an opinion.
Okay. Mr. Stoneman.
So I take Lynn's point. The problem, there's, the moderator's going to allow 10 minutes for each side to speak. So it's going to be difficult for the school committee to get up and say much during the 10 minutes because I think they're going to prepare different speakers for both sides. So there's a value in the school committee saying that we support the resolution and that, because many of us are town meeting members, and that being stated prior to the meeting, that that's a known part of the meeting.
Okay. Mr. Hainer.
I would ask through the chair how this resolution or any resolution would have prevented what happened in Lawrence today. It wouldn't have.
Well-
And I'm just saying, I think it's important for people to stand up for their beliefs. I think it's very important, and I applaud that. A lot of people believe, on one side, that if we pass this, this will open our doors to the town, to every immigrant, criminal. I talked to some elderly at a building, I'm serious, they've taken it to one extreme. Another group honestly believes that if we don't pass this, no immigrant would ever be allowed in the town. This has no impact whatsoever. And a lot of people are voting, I think it's laudable that people want to support. I want to tell every child in our community and every parent in our community, we are not going to do anything different in the safety of their children. And I mean that sincerely, whether this resolution gets passed or doesn't get passed. We're not making a decision on safety for our children. We're making a statement, and the statement is just what it is. It's a group of words. It has no impact one way or the other, up or down. Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Allison Anpe.
Okay, so part of the reason I was asking why it wasn't sent to policy first was that I feel there's some background that we haven't gotten here. But since we were going to discuss it today, I called up Joe Kira, one of the selectmen, to try and get some of the questions answered that I had. So one question I had was just, what's the goal of this? Why, why is it being proposed? And what they're trying to suggest is to have town meeting support the police in policies that they're already doing, but right now, they're doing it because Chief Ryan has decided to do it. If you take Chief Ryan out of the picture, for whatever reason, they wanted to be sure that there's a directive from town of the sense of where we want to be going. And also to let people, to let immigrants and other people around them understand what the expectation is of the police, you know, so that, just to what Mr. Schlickman said, so that people are feeling comfortable going to the police, not feeling like, oh, well, the police are going to be the arm of ICE and come and get you. To speak to Mr. Carden's point, whether or not this applies to the schools, the schools have a role as a mandated reporter in terms of child abuse or teachers, yes, are mandated reporters.
But that doesn't go to the government, it's just very private.
Let Dr. Allison Anpe speak.
My point is that this makes it clear to teachers or others that they needn't fear if they report a child who's, they're not sure about-
Furpo, cover.
Dr. Allison Anpe has the floor.
My point is, if a teacher had a concern about a child who is an immigrant, and they're, they don't know, but they're pretty sure it's not, not, you know, illegal, whatever.
Documented, yeah.
None, die. This, I thought, would make it more clear that even if the police are involved because of the abuse, if it rolls down to that, that the police are not then going to involve ICE and stuff. I can see Mr. Hainer's face on the wall. He's going to keep going. No, but I'm saying that, to me, that is something that suggests that we could do. I think we may want to have our own separate whatever.
Resolution, okay.
Just a sec. Thinking about the concerns, the things that I've heard are mostly the funding. I understand that, you know, it's, funding is decreasing and stuff. I think a lot of times, people have been giving that concern short shrift. I don't think that is fair to the people who are thinking that. I think they're looking at five, right now, there's $5 million a year coming into the town. And then if that goes away, that blows a really big hole in the town's budget. And that they're feeling like they can't handle the property tax, you know, the only way that we can increase the money is to get property tax. And they're already feeling like they're short and they can't do it. I asked him how likely, if they had talked to town council and how likely it was felt that this would happen. And it's basically, if the administration follows the laws according to normal legal standards, there's case law and stuff that would say no. The problem is, and the concern that people have, is that this administration is not always following things, the behavior is not always conforming to normal legal standards. And so where do we go? I don't know. I had, I was concerned that some of this was being done so that we would sort of get the sanctuary town badge. No, I'm serious. I feel like that's, some of the discussion is like that, and just, you know, let's just do this. I found, actually looking at the resolution and what it says, much more compelling to me that it supports the, and that's why I asked us to get it into notice, because I think that's really what we should be looking at for this discussion, that it talks about what we're doing and what the expectations are of the police, and more about why we're doing it. And for those reasons, I feel that it would be a reasonable thing for the school committee to support.
So I just want to add something. I was at a state hearing yesterday on the statewide initiative to make a safe state, and the funding issue came up. The consensus in that room was that it wouldn't pass constitutional muster, that there was really, really strong case precedent, specifically decided by Roberts and Scalia, that basically said that the federal government doesn't have the power to clawback money because the state refuses, you know, that there's a lot about separation of powers and the Tenth Amendment. And so I'm not saying that's not legitimate, but there is a lot of discussion at the legal circles about whether that threat would pass any constitutional muster.
Just the concerns that I'm hearing are that, no, it won't pass legal muster, but in the meantime, they're holding the check.
Right, right.
And so, you know, we still have two years or three years of $5 million short.
Right, right.
And that's-
Right, I get it. Okay, I mean, Dr. Bodie had something to add?
What I want to add, because the question is, how does this affect the schools in terms of our role in a, in a town that is a sanctuary city or town? Right now, the schools do not ask for any documentation. Our only, the only thing that we're really looking at is age and date of birth in terms of placement. And if a student is coming from an out-of-state or another community, really looking at grades and, so it's, and then residency. We do not in any way seek out that information. And we certainly, one, we don't have the information, and we are guided by very strong regulations by the federal government, FERPO laws, that prevent us from releasing any information. I think that you'd almost have to- I think that you'd almost have to have a subpoena by a court in order to get any kind of information. In fact, I'm going to, I'm in the process of writing a memo to all parents so that they are very clear about the role of schools in, in this issue, not sanctuary, but in terms of immigration. So, and also providing some resources. But I, I think it's more, I don't want to really comment on the warrant article itself, but in terms of the schools, it, it would not affect how we operate.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Hainer.
Dr. Boddy covered most of it. I would ask people that have concerns about records and reporting, 603 Code of Massachusetts Regulation 23.05, privacy and student records. It is the most detailed way, I mean, what teachers, administrators have to go through to even consider releasing records to appropriate people. As far as mandated reporting, that is one of the most privacy-driven areas so that people are free to give that. And anybody releasing those things, those records to a non-qualified person, the state gets all over. It is massive punishing those people. So, I want to support our people. I want our people, everybody to feel safe. And I agree with Dr., with what the chair said as far as the potential not being constitutional. I just, this particular resolution, and I apologize, I don't mean this to be insulting, but it's a feel-good resolution. It has no teeth, it has no, it gives no added protection to anybody. If people want to do it, fine. I just want people to understand that it doesn't change the status of our students, it doesn't change the status of our citizens.
Okay. Dr. Allison Eppi.
I just wanted to clarify, I wasn't implying that anyone was releasing records to someone not qualified. What I was saying was that it would, if a, if a teacher had concerns about a student who they suspected, they didn't know, but they suspected, was, would fall into one of the categories that are at risk. To me, it would, if they know that the directive from the town is not to involve ICE and stuff to the police, it would make it easier to start making referrals into that than if they felt like, if you think about the opposite, if our town has decided that it's going to join in and, you know, we're going to scoop everybody up, that teacher might feel torn about what's the best thing to do for the child because, you know, they can report the abuse, but then the child might get picked up and, that's what I was trying to say. I wasn't suggesting anything about release of records to appropriate.
All right. I think we're ready to take a vote. So, the motion on table by Mr. Thielman, second.
Mr. Schlickman.
Mr. Schlickman, sorry. Seconded by Mr. Thielman. That was it, sorry. Yes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay. Obstentions? Okay. One opposition, one abstention. Okay. Where are we at? Okay. Superintendent's report.
All right. Long report?
Yes, long report?
Long report.
Okay.
Well, first of all, let's start with the update on school buildings, projects. I think the most notable news this week is that steel is going up at Thompson. And we've been waiting for this and we don't have yet a revised schedule, but that is being requested to be available by next week. But that is, that's a good step forward. Today, we had a meeting with the, with a number of people in the district, Dr. Chesson, Director of Technology and our architect and procurement people for Stratton and looking at the technology that we're going to purchase for that building. If you remember, Stratton, as part of this renovation plan, is going to be a one-to-one school. And what, what was, has been decided, that wasn't decided today, but what has been decided is that we're going to do iPads in K to 2 and then Chromebooks 3 to 5.
iPads, K to 2 will be without keyboards, Chrome, iPads with keyboards for grade 3 and then Chromebooks for 4 and 5.
Okay. They have, new iPads apparently have a snap-in keyboard, so that's what we're going to, that's the plan. And there were a lot of questions about projections. So, anyway, that is well on its way as, as well. Gibbs is moving forward. We're probably, I'm going to be sending out a notice to the advisory committee that we're going to have another meeting soon, probably the 6th of April. Getting confirmation from the architects. I think they're ready to come back for the, you know, for more feedback on the revisions they've made based on the previous feedback. So, that's moving forward as well, both in terms of the building project as well as the, this, this aspect of it. Hardy, well, we'll just, we're sort of in holding until we get to town meeting. If we have the funds, then we're going to move very quickly to secure the project teams. The, the high school, we have the RFP for the OPM, the Onus Project Manager, ready to be submitted to MSBA. In fact, I think we're submitting it tomorrow. So, that's moving along quite well. And we have a, a building meeting next, this coming Monday. And Mr. Thielman, our chair, has approved the agenda?
I approve the agenda.
Actually, it's not, it's not Monday, it's Tuesday. It's Tuesday. I'm sorry. It's right before the permanent town building committee.
I do, I do. Tuesday.
There's another meeting Monday. I can't remember what it is, but there's another one.
There's a meeting every night.
There's a meeting every night, almost. So, that pretty much Stratton, I think we're on, I think all is moving forward at the pace that needs to. We just hope that Thompson pace picks up.
May I just ask a question on the Chromebooks and the iPads and stuff? Will their professional development being, is that part of bringing these in for the teachers and stuff?
Yeah, I mean, these are not new. We've been having professional development on utilizing this tool for the past five years.
But now, I mean, I'm just thinking, if I've had some in the classroom versus a whole, an entire classroom, my approach to a lot of areas might change.
Well, a lot of, what's really nice about Stratton is they've had one cart to every two teachers for like three or four years. But we would certainly provide whatever professional development and support that these teachers feel like they need.
Thank you.
As we move forward with this too, we're considering what Chromebooks as well. There's different manufacturers of them and different options that, that didn't even exist a year ago. So, that's part of the research over the next week.
Okay. Could more questions come in? Dr. Allison Eppi?
With the Chromebooks, do they have touchscreens?
Funny you should ask that because one of the things that I learned in that conference I went to is that HP has put out a new touchscreen Chromebook and PC, all under $300. Now, we, we know that there's a memory, it's a minimum memory at 64 gigabytes. I don't want to go into all the details, but we are researching that because to be able to combine the two would be great because a lot of the apps that we would want to use do, do better in a touchscreen environment.
That's why I was asking. We actually have a Acer model, Acer and ASUS, ASUS, both also have touchscreens and we have an Acer model in-house that we've had for about a couple of weeks now to take a look at it. So, we can get test models to make, for the teachers to look at.
Thank you.
Mr. Carden.
Yeah, I wondered if you could update us on the Gibbs costs, because that's probably going to come before a town meeting.
Yes. I think we're, the Gibbs costs are right at the number, they're, we're $25 million in the debt override. But there, the town manager has been identifying other sources of monies.
Can you explain the background of a?
Well, one, one issue is that when the DOR allows you to increase the amount of money in a debt exclusion based on an escalator, depending on when the override was and when you actually get the money. And so, that, that ability to do that will provide some extra funds. And there's another source that he has identified. So, the, what the goal is, is to have, I think it's 27 million is the number.
Do you want to give us the background of?
I'd rather come prepared with all, pardon?
Do you want to give us the background of sort of why that number is different than what we thought a year ago?
Well, because costs change. And one of the things that is true in the Gibbs project, we have very generous contingency funds in, in the design and in construction. And I think the people who have been looking at this affirm that they're generous. And because of the thoroughness in which Shomit and, and our architects have looked at the building, yes, in an old building, there could be some surprises, but anticipating a couple of them, for example, and looking at the exterior walls and the interior walls, there is, if you're going to run the kind of wiring that we're going to need data, it, it is potentially, when you open those up, could be potentially leading to tremendous cost adjustments upward. So, the architects have proposed at a much lower cost, and this will actually be very energy efficient as well, is to build a wall in front of a wall so that there would be a conduit space in between the two to run all the wires. So, we're not going to have to touch any of the exterior walls in the building. It's things like that that are starting to minimize the surprises that you would expect to have in an older building. One of the other things that, when we were looking at the cost estimates last year, there were things that weren't considering doing, the biggest issue was windows. And, and then the, the original cost estimates on the building thought, well, maybe we can keep these windows. But the more thought was given to it is if you're going to want to have a building around for the next 50 years, you, you should replace the windows now, not later because of just the cost and the disruption. So, that increased the cost. And then there were increases in the exterior of the building as well, doing much more extensive repair than was originally thought to do. So, those are the kinds of cost pressures. So, then that's what's going to require to go above the 25. But, as I said, the contingencies are quite generous and the people who've been working on this field that it's, it's important that you identify the monies that fit the budget, but at the same time, do we think will come in lower? Yes. Is that what you were asking me?
Yeah. The point is, yeah, the point is that town meeting is going to be asked to vote for 27 million.
Yes.
The voters only approve 25 million.
Yes.
We need to have a very clear and concise explanation about why that increased and that was in there. But I think we need to be a little bit more crisp on that explanation.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you asked me out of the, without really giving, having all the notes here in terms of why, but yes, I agree that it has to be crisper than that. And I don't think that we would go into the details of all the things that we're doing to cut the costs and surprises of the project. But the town manager will be presenting this to town, to town meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, that was not as crisp as it could be. All right. So, one of the, one of the things we wanted to do tonight was to do a review of progress on goals across the board. You've, you've heard much this year and sometimes, one of the things I think we probably should do better than we have been is identify in an agenda what goal might be a presentation relating to. And Mr. Sherrill and I have talked about that. So, I've done a summary of different presentations that relate to that. But one of the particular updates we wanted to have tonight was an extension of talking about Goal 1.1, which has to do with the learning standards and progressions in each discipline. You've actually heard quite a bit this year and you will hear more this spring. You've heard from the Director of World Language, the Lead Teacher in Family and Consumer Science, Director of Social Studies History, and Director of English Language Arts, who really, I think, expressed quite well the kind of work they're doing in their district to identify learning standards, progression in the discipline, how their, how their assessments are changing and aligning with their, their goals. And in fact, that group has been working with Dr. Chesson in trying to define what is a learner in our school system.
Yes, so Dr. Chesson is going to.
She is going to talk at this point.
Present more about, and I think at our retreat, there was sort of a desire to get a better understanding of Goal 1.1. Hold on, Dr., Mr. Carden?
Yeah, so, I mean, the, the presentations I heard were sort of general curriculum updates, which were wonderful, but this goal speaks to what I thought was going to be a list of essential learning standards and progressions. Is that being developed or is that something else?
Okay, so Dr. Chesson is going to.
Great, great question. Yeah. That's a great question. So, in order to do that, when you start with backwards design, what you want to do is start with your vision, your ultimate vision for the student as learner and this, and in this case, student as citizen. Because while we do have learning standards that have to do with the content area, they don't, very don't, very often don't touch on those other skills or transferable skills that we would like students to have. So, the curriculum team started out by brainstorming what are the transferable skills? What are the skills we want every student to have as both a learner and as a citizen? And we worked on that draft for probably about two months. And you actually have a copy of the draft that was uploaded to you today. And you'll see that it says draft, draft, draft all over it, so to really emphasize that we're trying to get the input of all the stakeholders in this process. That's the place where you have to start. So, we'll, we presented that to the entire administration team. So, that was all the special education coordinators, all the principals, the deans this past week. And then got feedback from them and sort of took them through the process that we went through, how we identified the transferable goals, what we had looked at in terms of the research around transferable goals, what we've looked at, what other districts had put out there so that we're not just reinventing the whale and then looking for, and also looking for consensus. The next step will be to simultaneously continue to get feedback and refine it, but at the same time, the curriculum people will now start talking about, so if these are the skills, if these are the transferable skills that we want students to have, if these are the characteristics of our students as learners and as citizens, what are the experiences that we currently have that are in support of that, that the students are going through? And what are the experiences that students have that are not helpful and to create, create that? Once we do that, we'll be developing an essential list of experiences that we want every student to have. Because we're talking about Gibbs right now, that's sort of a microcosm or a pilot of this discussion. So, I know that's smack dab in the middle, but if we, we know where we want students to end up, so by the time they get to sixth grade, what would they have had to have happen? And by the time they go from sixth grade to high school, what needs to happen there? So, it's, it's kind of fortuitous that we're looking at Gibbs and we're talking about what does that curriculum look like? The curriculum directors have really come up with the idea that that sixth grade is a year of transition in, so it's really a big about transition. And then transformation from, you know, elementary school student to student who's prepared for secondary work. And so, that transformation, what has to happen there and then the transition out. So, we will be presenting this to teacher groups as we go through professional development for the rest of this year. We'll be, we're presenting it to you and we look forward to your feedback. We'll be putting out for public comment for parents. And it's based on a description of the graduate that was actually in the technology plan that was put out for, has been put out for public, public comment. That's where we started from three or four times over the last five years. So, we'll be continuing to do that. To pick out those essential learning standards, the frameworks for each of the subject areas is about an inch thick. So, I don't think you're going to see, while an essential learning standard is, in ELA is, you know, reading 1.1.3. I think what you're going to find are the things that you see in that draft and then what experiences are going, are going, students going to have as a focus. So, we did a text-based discussion on Monday on an article that's put out by two leading researchers in this area that talked about, so if one of the things you want students to be able to do is have a discussion using argumentation and evidence, what experiences do they have to have in ninth grade? What experiences in 10th grade, 11th and 12th grade across all subject areas in order to make that? And then how you build on the complexity of that? So, in ninth grade, they may be using evidence to support their, their own argument, but in 10th grade, they're not only using evidence to support their argument, but evidence that would help them to refute someone else's argument. And then by the time you get into 11th grade, you would get into a full, almost a full-blown debate or expertise. So, that's kind of where we're going with that. So, I'm not sure if that answers your question or gives you an idea about where we're going.
Yes, thank you. It, it was, the way this was presented was that the presentations we had, which were very useful and helpful, were tied into this goal and I don't really think they were.
I think you'd have to sort of read between the lines. There were, there were discussions in both presentations, but what we didn't do, and I would agree with you, is that we didn't call to your. call to your attention, so this is a transferable skill. I think I did say that when the social studies teachers were presenting, I said, oh, I'm hearing you're all talking about evidence, and that makes me happy, because that is one of the transferable skills. So, I think that as we have curriculum presentations, we need to call to your attention, this is something that matches our draft of the student as learner, student as citizen, these are transferable skills that we're going to be looking for students to have experience and build on, for the K through 12 experience.
Great, thank you.
Dr. Allison Ebbey.
So, that sounds very interesting. I'm a little confused, how do you translate the experiences into competencies? Because, to me, it's the competencies that I want them to bring home.
So, how do you build that skill within a student? So, you may say, that when I say experiences, I'm saying, what do students have to know and be able to do, in order to demonstrate that they have that competency? So, if one of those...
Okay, okay, so it's not just do it, but not...
But, they can't just happen magically, they have to have some experience that helps them to acquire that knowledge and those skills. Does that help?
Yeah, I think you're talking about, how do they, experiences that demonstrate the competency?
Well, both experiences that help them to gain them, and experiences that allow them to demonstrate their mastery.
Okay, yes.
I understand this is a two-year timeline, so what, can you tell us a little bit about what next year looks like?
So, next year, we will actually be defining those experiences, because, again, we'll be doing it, if you start with a smaller bite, so we're looking at Gibbs, and we have three committees, and one of those committees will be looking at what are the, where do we want kids to get to by the end of the sixth grade year? So, what experiences do they need to have? What skills do we need to develop? What projects might we have to have? What are the emphasis? So, one of the things that we've discussed is to talk about, again, evidence comes to mind a lot, because that's what's a really high focus of the MCAS Next Generation exam. So, what does it look like that students would have to do in science, what is, in order to demonstrate that they are able to use evidence to support argumentation? What would happen in English Language Arts, in math, and in social studies? And then, how would you, because you really want them to not be siloed, what kind of cross-curricular projects might you have to have, in order for students to see the connection between the use of that ability across? So, I would expect that by, you know, if not the summer, by the end of the first trimester in the fall, we'll have some concrete examples of what this will look like at Gibbs.
Great. Are there questions coming? Okay, so, we have more stuff, I know, on Lady Goals.
Yes. I would, I would add just one small thing, and that is, it's not a linear progression either. This is, while we're also trying to do backward design on this, people are already leapfrogging into different, in different disciplines, into this work. They're sort of not, they're not waiting to entirely, well, now, we've defined what the learner is, and now we're going to do something else. It's, it has a more synergy to it than might appear this way. So, we've talked a little bit about this. What I've done here to sort of have, to give a summary, was to actually take what the goals are, and just give you a brief overview of what has been going on, and talk about a couple of the goals that may not be progressing this year. So, the first one, the first one we've already talked about, and unless somebody wants to talk some more about that, and I think that, as we go through the year, we'll have more information than we can give you. The next one is redefining the educational vision and programs of the high school, and identifying, integrating its core values and identifying essential habits of mind. There's some strong links between these two. What's happened with this particular goal is timelines have changed, that is sort of, that is determined by the MSBA process. I think that we did not anticipate that the part of the feasibility study, which involves getting your project teams, was going to take the time it does, because when we've done projects on our own in recent years, Stratton, for example, even the work we're doing with Gibbs, that project, that, that, that part of the process has gone more quickly. But, there are processes with MSBA that you have to follow. And I'm not saying that it's not a good process, I think it's one way that they exercise a lot of good oversight on building projects. But nonetheless, it has changed what our anticipation of the timeline. Now, this particular report that will be submitted to MSBA will probably not be compiled in next year. However, the discussions are still going on now, and teachers are, administrators are visiting schools. We did a little bit more extensive questionnaire for MSBA, that's probably a better, a pretty good foundation for where we're going to go with this, but the part of this also involves community input, your input, parent input, student, teacher, so we're going to go through an extensive outreach in the fall, to finally write this, write this vision and document for MSBA.
May I just ask a question? Does this have any effect on the timeline, completion?
That's what she's saying.
Well, each one of these modules can take, they usually give a range of time.
For the high school or for the goal?
For the high school, a whole high school project?
I thought I heard you say, maybe I misunderstood, that you're going to have to redo something and resubmit.
That the goal won't be finished by the end of this year?
It will not be done by the end of this year. We have...
So, does that affect the feasibility study?
No.
Okay, okay.
No, it's just the timeline, feasibility study is longer than we thought it was going to be.
Okay, thank you.
What you do have, which is, you know, is the beginning document on this, is what you received this year, from the educational questionnaire we submitted, because the administrators who filled it out, expanded much more in that than probably was expected by MSBA.
Right.
The third goal, this is the one that is going to take more time. This was establish a district-wide committee to assess the student support team model, the response to intervention process, and special education support at all levels, and recommend a better model, to better meet the needs of students needing academic and social-emotional support. What I can say is happening is that individual schools are evaluating their own process. We have not, we have, it probably was just too ambitious a goal for this year, I'd be honest about it, given all the other projects that are going on right now. But, work is going on in individual schools, we have not assembled a district-wide committee at this point, and probably will not until next year.
If I may?
Yeah.
Will we be receiving data at the end of next year, or will that push it out a second year out?
Well, I would hope that next, we would maybe get the committee going, and the purpose of this goal is, first of all, to, just like we're doing with SEL this year, sort of assessing where we are. The processes are different in different schools.
I didn't know if you needed to have the committee together for a full, get it together for a full year, and then get the data?
It might be, it might be, and so when we revise this, we might need to think about how to...
Okay.
How to put a more reasonable timeline on it.
Thank you.
And then, the Goal 1.4 is establish a planning committee to assess the district's strengths and challenges in creating safe and supportive school environments for all students, and for providing students with social, emotional, and cultural proficiency skills needed for college and career readiness, and to be a contributing members of a diverse democratic society. A lot of work has gone on, began last summer. You've heard Ms. Elmer talk about an overview of the process this year, and now we're into the stage where committees have been formed at each school, and are tasked with doing an assessment of the school, and writing action plans for the school, in which we're going to come back as a whole district, because there's a lot of coordination that's still, would need to take place. But, those action plans, as you, as you heard her talk about at the last meeting, will be due in June. And one comment on the language of this goal, I think that, you know, we all evolve in our thinking about language, and how to express things. I don't, we were just at a talk yesterday, and one of the things that the person pointed out is that we're never going to be proficient, and we're never going to achieve cultural proficiency, and she encouraged us all to be thinking about cultural awareness, because it is a continuum, it is something that we grow with, as we, if, when we focus on, you know, learning more about other cultures, and so, in the rewriting of this goal, and we talk about the implementation plans, I think that's language I wanted to revise. So, those were our four goals under Goal 1, which is the goal that we look at student achievement, and what we want for our students in schools.
Sorry to keep biting you, but on the last one there, do you think we'd be able to get a report by the end of the year, with regard to the assessments, and what came out of that?
Yes, they're due in June, early June.
So...
Yeah, you will.
I think that's important for us to, that, go back to looking at that position that we created tonight, as well.
Right, and then, we're going to be developing action plans for next year, and we'll have the support of AEF in that process. All right, so, Goal 2 is about staff excellence and professional development in the, in the school district. And our first goal to advance this vision of the Arlington Public Schools this year, was to provide professional development for the implementation of the new science curriculum in grades four and five, and the new math curriculum in grades K1. And that did happen. One of the things that I've provided for you, actually, I should say Dr. Chesson's provided for you, are the, the, all of the schedules for professional development this year, and also a look back on last summer, because some, a lot of the work we do also happens during the summer. But, that has happened, and I think one thing that was also helpful this year, though, not, that wouldn't appear in the schedule of PD, is the fact that we have someone who is point four, who is a high school teacher, biology teacher, who's been leading a lot of this professional development, and also acting as a coach to help in classrooms. And the feedback has been very positive on that, and hopefully, that can continue next So, the, what we, the second goal was to provide administrators with cultural proficiency professional development during the 16, 17 school year, and plan for professional development for teachers during the 17, 18 school year. We began with workshops, or learning, learning times for us, learning sessions on, on cultural awareness. We began last summer, all the administrators in the district, and I gave you the three dates that we have met on this. But, what we, it was facilitated by two administrators who had had a considerable experience in, outside of our district, in leading this kind of work. And what we came to, came to the conclusion is that, I think we've reached a point where it would be helpful to have an outside facilitator. And we do have someone, we have six days scheduled this summer, two of which are required day, well, everybody's going to have four days, but you get to pick two, two of the units, two days, that are, two days back to back, and then there's a beginning and ending session. So, that is happening. As far as planning for cultural awareness, this is happening as part of actually the earlier goal, as we look at the action plans for next year.
All right. I have to say, I'm glad that you're using, I was actually surprised that we hadn't gone to an outside person right away, and I'm really heartened that, about this development. I think this is, I've met this person, he's fabulous.
He is fabulous.
And I think it's going to be a really interesting set of sessions.
I think so too, and we, and I have been working with Dr. Hoyt in laying out, we're still not completely done, but we have a good plan for these, these six days. Actually, it's four days, everybody has four days. All right, so, actually, if you don't mind, you can talk to this, do you mind? But anyway, this is to provide ongoing and regular professional development in technology to support teachers, and using technology to enhance teaching and learning. And, you know, we continued the tech university last summer, but I think one of the things that we learned, and we, that sometimes the most effective professional development is when you embed it, and it's not just necessarily a class or a demonstration, and when people can come in and help coach, or give you some pointers, and I think that, that's the work that you've been doing with our two instructional specialists.
Right, Susan Bissin at the elementary schools, and Joanna Bradley at the middle school have, go in and work with teachers in the classroom. You go to a class, you learn something, if you don't put it to work right away, you forget it. So, they go and work with people in the classroom, and they are responsible for all of that training, including, they've been heavily involved with the training for MCAS Next Generation, for the teachers who are having kids take it for the first time online, and doing infrastructure tests across the district, so that teachers can feel comfortable that when they get in there, the network's going to support them. And the other thing that I had forgotten is that Susan also runs one Thursday, every other, every other Thursday during the month, a tech and practice group. So, groups of teachers get together, they trade what's going well, what's not going well, and then Susan has a website where she posts all the information, so teachers across the district can share in that information.
There are increasing number of videos too, that we have been, I'll probably add that in there, the videos where it's the how-tos, and sometimes, those are easier for people to access at their home, when they don't have the person around. So, going on here, the increase of diversity of the APS staff this year, staffing levels to better reflect the diversity of our students. I'm not sure that this goal will ever go away, it's something that we have been committing to do, we've worked toward it, and you've had a report about the success, or minimal success we've had this year, from last year, but we remained committed to the work, we have the coffee, by the way, you're most invited to come, it's April 26, where we will have, we invite, personally invite applicants from diverse backgrounds, and to this coffee, if they, to meet with administrators and possible openings. So, Mr. Spiegel's been at a job fair, this has already started, and will be, has brought, and will bring back more resumes, that we will reach out to people.
I'm going to make a comment. So, when community members come to me with the concern that we don't have as much diversity as we would like, one of the things I say to them is, that one of the most effective things is personal connections. You know, that, that people in the community who know other people with diverse backgrounds should be reaching out, telling them what a fabulous place Arlington is, you know, and that, that can often be, that kind of personal connections can often be an incredibly effective way to get people that we really want. So, I encourage, that it doesn't, we don't have to put all the burden on you, it's a team effort, we should all be involved in this process.
And we have been trying to do more networking, but I appreciate that comment, because, you know, there's a lot of people in the community...
Who have connections, who know people.
Who have connections.
Exactly. We need to spread the word.
What we, what we perhaps should do, we put our openings on School Spring, and most people who, who might want to know if there's an opening, would not look on School Spring. So, we might want to be, we put them on our website as well, so maybe that's something that, you know, people are wondering, they see that we're looking for...
Oh, yeah.
A middle, a middle school English teacher, perhaps, they might know of someone, and refer them to us, so that, that would be very helpful. All right, so, that was Goal 2, which is, again, is focusing on the, the program, which is focusing on professional development, and just our staff support. So, Goal 3, the vision of the Arlington Public Schools, is to create the resources, infrastructure, and educational environment, that will offer cost-effective education, that maximizes the impact of taxpayer dollars, and utilizes best practices, academic research, and rigorous self-evaluation, to provide students and staff the resources, materials, and infrastructure required for optimum teaching and learning, in a safe and healthy environment. And certainly, the safe and healthy environment, one of the, one of the things that we're doing is working on... doing is working on our buildings, for sure. And I think that this year, you've heard updates on the building projects every single meeting, but it doesn't, you know, I, I don't think it's, I think the community knows that we probably have more building projects going on than any of our neighbors in a wide area. We have five building projects going on, or hopefully it's gonna be five, we'll, we'll see after town meeting for Hardy, but we certainly have four active projects going on right now. And the intent in all of these is to create an environment for both students and staff that are great learning environments and are very safe, safe environments. So, the technology plan, it's a little right up here, we, we, there, this is something that Dr. Cheston has been working on and the draft, every year we revise it. We've had a technology plan, the technology plan is on the website, but it's not a, it is a dynamic plan and it changes. And in order for it to change, you have to reach out to all the different stakeholders that are involved and this is the process that the plan is in right now. We already mentioned what one of the reach outs was, was to the Stratton educators as to what their device preference is, and now it's been decided. And now the same process is going to happen with the sixth grade teachers, which helps shape the plan in terms of, you know, when we first started with this technology plan, we were in a different place than we are now in terms of understanding what, what would be the most effective tool in the classroom. So that is, it's just changing and I don't know if you wanna add anything else to that.
No, just that the level of expertise in the teaching community has really increased and so I feel much more comfortable having people come to the table and, you know, they're dealing from a place of experience as opposed to a place of, you know, I'm fearful of this, this is the only thing I know. And so we wanna give people as much opportunity as possible to say, you know, it doesn't, whether it's an iPad or a Chromebook, it doesn't really, I mean, there's, there's a cost difference, but in terms of what, which device they feel, as long as they can create an argument that, you know, matches and makes reasonable, we, we wanna support teachers and provide them with the kind of device that they feel that they would most best use in the classroom.
All right. So one of our goals was to complete all the documentation for Module One that's been done, I gave you the, we, we keep a, all, a list of all the documentation on the website. I will tell you that the, there is a, there are two committees, subcommittees right now, actually three, on the building committee for the high school and one is a communications subcommittee and it's meeting on Monday to look at our communication plan. While I, we have all this documentation there, we need something that's gonna be a little bit more engaging and we need a, we need a communication plan out as to what's happening and that, we'll be beginning the work on that and keep you informed. But right now, all the documents that were submitted in Module One are, have been released onto the website and anybody can read it. And on, on the left-hand side of our website, there's, on the quick links, there's a building, there's the facilities, and if you go into that, it immediately go to, you know, to, four other areas in which you can then go to Gibbs and see all that's there, or the high school and see all that's there. The, so we're moving into operations, Goal Four, which is about operations, communication and stakeholder engagement in the, in our schools. So one of the, the goals I think we all shared was to create a dashboard, there's a lot of collaboration with the Community Relations Subcommittee to create a, a dashboard that was gonna be able to provide a lot of quick information for people wanting to know more about the Arlington Public Schools. It's, it's not something that again is static, it's going to change, we're going to increase some areas of it, we're going to certainly have to update things annually, but I think it's a good way to begin. In fact, even in the, the budget report we're going to give to town meeting, we're putting in a lot of graphics, in, graphics for example, about our comparison to the town, the town manager twelve. And I think that that information is very helpful to put where we are in perspective. And I will say, as a sneak preview, that we do really well. I mean, for the money that we have per, as a per pupil, we, we, the town should be very proud of the, the school system they have in terms of its performance and a lot of that goes to the teachers and students in our district. Okay. So, in, another goal this year was to implement upgrades to the district's financial software with the, and provide professional development for all users. At this point, it's really even all people, financial, the, the financial software of the school is the financial software of the town. And the town undertook a major upgrade. We went from nine point four to eleven point two and that normally is something you would have done over many years and we've done it in a year. And it's required a, a lot of meetings, a lot of time, my hat's off to Patty Brennan for what, leading this. In the school department, this affects the business office, payroll and HR. And all the people that are involved there have been involved in meetings and professional development at least once a month since this project began and it's still ongoing. Continue to engage parents and stakeholders in the dis, as the district addresses enrollment and facility needs. Tonight you heard from Vision Twenty and the work we're doing, well, it's not directly to enrollment and facilities, it is an outreach to the community to, to have them understand what we're doing as a school system. But in terms of the, the more narrow enrollment and facility needs, we had a, we, we have a visioning of Gibbs Parent Night in the fall, which was similar to the one we did with the teachers at Addison. And those, the outcome of those meetings really did lead to the principals that have guided the arch, that really guided the development of the Gibbs Plan. And we're gonna go through the same process with the high school because you have to have principals that you build upon as you make a lot of decisions. And in fact, I can tell you for a fact that when decisions have come up in a lot of Gibbs planning meetings, sometimes go back to those principles and say, you know, that was, that was an important priority. So, we've, you know, in, in terms of the facility of the high school and the, and I would say even probably more for the high school than Gibbs, but we, we partnered with Vision Twenty Twenty to show the, the movie Most Likely to Succeed in November and there was a follow-up discussion in the community in December. We had, we had, I had a coffee in the fall and I'm hoping to have one in the spring and, you know, what comes up is questions about enrollment, questions about facilities and question about social, emotional, it's a, it's sort of a wide-ranging conversation. And then in terms of advisory, there's a Gibbs Advisory Committee, the consisting of teachers and parents, and this committee has met with the architects to review the, the interior visuals of the school and gave a lot of feedback and we're gonna meet again very soon. I don't know, I take two meetings, I might take three, we'll, we'll see how many meetings it'll take to, to, to deal with this. But those are examples of the kind of outreach we've done this year so far.
Mr. Hainer.
Just for my own clarification, this was a summary of the district goals, am I correct?
Correct.
So, do we have a date?
But there, but that's embedded in this.
What's embedded in this?
My, my two goals.
So, is this our meeting for the mid, is, do you see this as the meeting for the midterm on your goals?
This is the update, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, any other questions, comments? So, yeah. Dr. Allison Appi.
This is more to my fellow committee members and just looking at Goal Two, this is for thinking for the future, looking at Goal Two. So, the way we phrase the goals, what we don't know is if what we did, was it enough? You know, we, we're told about what we did, but we don't know, was it enough, did it work? Did it achieve the results that we were trying to get? We're not, and I'd just like to see us pushing towards getting that next level, not just that we're doing things. It's, I'm not questioning that you're doing things and that they're effective, I'm saying I wanna be able to tell people why we know that.
Right.
That's just a mention, when we do professional development, if you're talking about Goal Two, professional development, we solicit feedback after every, but what you're wondering is, for example, was the professional development for the math rollout effective?
Yes.
Yes. And how do you measure whether it's effective? Well, one way you're gonna know whether it's effective is how our students are gonna continue to perform, both for math and science. So there's an ex, there's an external assessment that's going to go on there. But I, I think there's other measures of it and certainly whether teachers feel that they understand the curriculum and feel comfortable teaching the curriculum. And that's the kind of information we try to gather both through the PD feedback, as also we try to get it through coaches as to what's happening because they're very close to the situation. So there's multiple, the sort of qualitative and quantitative ways that we will get to it. As far as measuring the rollout right now, I think that our feedback, I know our feedback from all of our PD on this has been very positive.
Specifically in the math and the rollout of the new math curriculum, K-1, we actually did a number of PD not only on Tuesday, but also had release time during the school day for the K teachers and the one teachers in groups of two, like two schools, to get together and get additional PD and planning. And that had, the feedback from that has been so positive in terms of, this is the first time when I've had a new curriculum, I felt like totally prepared to go into the classroom, I really feel like, I, the, the feedback was so positive that even though the principals, an elementary principals initially said, no more PD during the day, I can't cover those classes or I'm having trouble covering those classes, you know how much trouble we have getting subs, that when the math director went to them and said, I'd really like to continue to do this for grades two and three, they all said, you know what, it's one of the most effective PDs we've ever had, let's put, let's do it again next year. So that's the kind of feedback, but we can certainly write that up and present that to you next year.
Yeah, I'm just thinking it helps us.
Sure.
When we're trying to allow for money or.
Yes, absolutely. That's a good, that's a good point and when I give you a final wrap-up of it, try to include more of that of.
Yeah.
Of how, what kind of feedback we had, the success of this.
Yeah, I mean, both, both in the moment after and then three months later, oh, you know, I'm realizing now, I never learned about this part or.
Sure.
You know, so that we keep improving.
The, one of the other things, and I expect to do that again this year, is that we, a lot of times go around and do focus group interviews with different grades and so K and one will be my focus for this year. I always actually meet with K steering committee, a once a month, but also to go around to K and one teachers and ask them at the end of the school year, what worked for you, what didn't work for you in terms of professional development.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So, my memory last year is that we took this document and we sent it to CIAA and they might do nothing with it, but just to do the final review and sort of see if there's anything else. That was what we did last year. So, I, I suggest that we send it to them this year, but again, they might just say, done, nothing needed, but just to do a final review, to see if there's anything else we'd like reported out in the next, you know, in this midterm cycle. Sound, that's my suggestion. Anything else, are there any other comments, questions? No, okay. So, uh, next item is the consent agenda. All, and we are, not as early as before, okay. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted in one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval warrant, approval warrant number one seven one five one, total warrant amount six hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents dated three sixteen two thousand and seventeen. Approval of minutes, approval of school commit, regular minutes, meeting Thursday, March sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen. Approval of trip, Arlington High School performance of arts trip to Italy and Switzerland, February two thousand and eighteen. Um, I think there's one more. A vote to approve school committee organizational meeting Thursday, April thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen at six fifteen.
Omo.
Okay.
Second.
All right, second to Mr. Schlickman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Sentience, okay. That's all unanimous. Subcommittee reports, budget, Dr. Allison Appi.
We passed the budget last time, that's a report.
Okay. Uh, Community Relations, Ms. Starks.
I wanna start by apologizing to everybody for the fact that I thought that my emails were all being forwarded and I have not gotten any official school committee emails for two months. So, I just found that out, I think I fixed it, but that's why I have not been showing up or responding to anybody because whatever I did didn't work. So, I apologize, I think I fixed it. Um, so, sorry I didn't make it this evening.
This is actually why.
I didn't make it to Monday's meeting, I haven't responded to you, I'm like, shit, sorry. I did not know that, I thought I'd set it up correctly, I thought it was all forwarding and I wasn't getting that mail. So, that's why, it's not like I dropped off the earth. So, this weekend Jennifer and Paul are going to be doing the school committee chat from eleven to twelve. Other than that, Community Relations has not had a meeting since February twenty-seventh and obviously we won't have another one until after the election, but set one up as soon as we.
I think if there's a, a need, we can still have meetings, you know, before the next, you know, restructuring.
We need to organize first.
Before the next restructuring, if there is a need, I'm just saying, it seems like there could still be a meeting.
I don't think there's anything on fire, so.
May not be, yeah, may not be needed, I'm just saying.
So, I, we'll probably just wait till.
Yeah.
After that, but that's it.
Okay. District Council Curriculum Instruction Assessment.
We celebrate, uh, first of all, as chair of the subcommittee, I wanna thank the school committee chair for her service this year and leading us through a good year for the school committee. We are done for the year, we are dissolving with everything else on April first and we look forward to reconstituting in, in a new year.
All right. All right. Facilities, Mr. Thimman.
I'll second, Mr. Schlickman's reporting, thank you for your leadership. I think it's a good time to do that because I think we're wrapping up the year, so thank you very much for your service.
Oh, well. With all the mistakes there. I finally got it, actually. School enrollment test force. Anything else?
We haven't met.
We haven't met.
I keep skipping policies.
I do.
Thank you.
I have to say, by the end of the night, my contacts are really like buzzy, buzzy and that's why I'm doing it, I'm so sorry about that.
No problem.
Policies.
And I was gonna say, you had a perfect night tonight.
Yeah.
But I won't say it now.
No, no, I didn't, absolutely.
Thank you. I'd also like to thank the members of the Policy Committee, Kirsten and Paul, for their work and their endurance for putting up with me for a whole year.
All right.
Nothing else at this time.
Okay. Legal service review.
Nothing at this time.
Arlington High School Building Committee.
We meet on Tuesday.
Right, in here at?
Six PM.
Six PM, okay.
Yeah, and, and also the meeting on Monday is at six thirty, it's actually the Communications Subcommittee.
Right.
Okay. Oh, Communication Subcommittee of the High School Building, right, great.
Public meeting, people can go.
Yeah, everything's public, yeah, all public meetings, okay. Gibbs Committee.
Has not met.
Okay. Warrant Committee.
It's the last time it met.
Everyone get paid.
Okay. Any liaison reports? Mr. Hainer.
I've got a couple. Permanence on Building Committee will be meeting in this room next Tuesday, right after the Arlington High School Building Committee, Committee Meeting at seven thirty and that's a great place. Dr. Bodie answered the questions on money, but the architects and everybody show up at that meeting and they'll tell you, then that's in bolts of where the buildings are as well.
Where the buildings are?
As far as progress.
Yeah.
They may, they'll also tell you where they're located. I'd also like to share, there was a meeting last Wednesday in Boston on March twenty-second, Bridging Two Communities, a Medco initiative, a planning group was established and was well-attended by the people that signed up from that meeting we had earlier and we're beginning.
Okay.
Thank you.
Announcements. Yes, Mr. Hainer.
Medco on the Hill was rescheduled after that last snowstorm, the people will gather at the African-American Museum at nine AM.
Meeting House.
At the Meeting House, thank you.
On Joy Street.
On April fourth. There's something going on at the State House preventing the, the normal part. The second part is, two-part, Watertown Savings Bank has a banner out in front congratulating our hockey team, this, so I wanted to share that. And Watertown Savings Bank have provided a five hundred dollar grant supporting the Bridging Two Communities. So I wanted to thank them publicly for supporting this group.
I wanna make announcement that the play, Arlington High School's putting on a play this Friday, Saturday and Sunday, seven thirty on Friday and Saturday and three o'clock on Sunday, they are performing, what's?
Crazy for you.
Crazy for you, crazy for, Gershwin's Crazy for You is, I think Gershwin's last play, still, yeah, Crazy for You.
And there's an art exhibit.
And, oh, there's an art. And, oh, and there's an art exhibit. Right, yes. What's, and that, is that timing?
It'll be going for another week, so it's down in the teachers' caf.
Okay, so it's, okay. Great. Any other announcements?
Oh, yeah. One other thing. We had a good time participating in the-
Oh, trivia bee.
Trivia bee last Sunday. And yes, Crazy for You was one of the trivia answers. We did not-
We didn't get that one.
I mean-
You're being modest.
I don't think that was one of our questions.
Oh, yes.
Did we win?
We, we won best team name.
Best team name.
What was our team name?
Which was Mr. Schlickman's genius.
Can you dig it?
Can you dig it?
We were in Jennifer's wonderful costumes of construction, yellow, hard ads.
So under construction. That's awesome.
And, yeah, the, the best costume went to basically Joe Curo and the school committee alumni team.
Yeah, they dressed like Snoopy. I mean, they really pulled it out. But they had makeup on, I mean-
Oh, yeah, makeup, yeah.
They were alive.
Yeah, we weren't doing makeup. But it was a great time, and they had the kids playing the first round.
Yeah.
And the Stratton team, which won, got every-
Dallin.
Oh, Dallin, rather. Dallin team that won. That side of the town.
Yeah, yeah.
That was the kid team.
No, no.
The Dallin fifth graders won.
Oh, no, no. The Stratton team for the adults.
Yes.
Oh, yes, the Stratton team for the adults.
The Stratton team for the adults.
Yes, you're right. I'm sorry, right. The Dallin team.
Every question right, which is unbelievably amazing.
Yep.
Don't they win every year?
No.
No, no, no. I don't think they win.
It moves, it moves around.
And their, their team was also a building-based thing. They were wearing little hats of-
Yeah.
Of the Stratton building.
The modulars.
Oh, the modulars, yeah, the modulars, yes.
And they're modulars.
Yes.
It's a great event, and I thank my two colleagues for playing with, with me, and we'll play again next year.
Excellent. So, another announcement, this Saturday, there is an election.
Yes.
A town election happening. The major races are not contested, however, 12 of the 21 precincts have contested races, and some of them incredibly contested. So, so, I encourage everyone to vote, no matter what, but, but especially find out who the town meeting members running in your precinct are, and talk to your neighbors, and, and talk to the people running, and make a decision. Yeah, Mr. Hayner.
We have the wonderful opportunity now, all the votes in the past two years have been recorded, so you can go to the town website and see where, how people have voted.
Right.
You become a more informed.
Yeah. And also, whether that particular town meeting member has been going to the meetings.
Yes.
Because we do have some, some people who don't show up as often. Yeah, yeah. And so, it's good to know that. Other announcements? Future agenda items. Mr. Hayner.
I would like the committee to decide a definite procedure of what items we will accept or delay that is submitted to us late. I'm not talking about emergency items. I want that clear, that they always get a priority. Example, tonight, and for whatever reason, we received two items as late as an hour prior to the meeting. And I'm old, I may be the only one, but I, I need some time to digest and, and give each item its due.
I think we were doing well before, but I think we did slip.
We keep slipping, we've done it, and we slipped.
It slipped today, for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah. Other future agenda items? I might throw out a couple. It sounds like we need, we're gonna see the technology plan coming up pretty soon. Right, the new technology plan is gonna be a future agenda item for school committee.
Yeah, I think you're, you're looking at, the next meet, I have two meetings, and then it depends on whether the meeting with the sixth grade for Gibbs comes to a conclusion or we have to come back to the table again. So, until that's resolved, we, we really can't put together the final-
Technology plan?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought it was April, no matter what.
No, April, I'm gonna sit down with them.
Got it, okay.
But because Gibbs is a year out, they don't have to, I don't wanna make them decide like that.
Got it. Got it, understand. And the other thing, which I'll start with, Dr. Cheston, is some update about how the new MCAS are going and what has changed and-
We can certainly tell you that in great clarity the next meeting because we start testing on Monday.
Great. Yeah, so that would be helpful for the committee, I think. Anything else? So, executive session, we're gonna move to executive session. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with union and/or non-union personnel, or contract negotiations with union and/or non-union in which held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect. To conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation in which have held in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect. Collective bargaining may also be conducted. To discuss open meeting law complaint, negotiations update, approval of traffic supervisors memorandum of agreement, vote to approve the following executive session minutes, March 16th, 2017. Okay.
So move.
We're gonna draw a call to go into executive session, right?
Are we gonna come out?
We are not coming out. That's what I understand, yeah.
Well, we are gonna come out, but we're not gonna come out and vote.
We don't need to come out and vote.
We are leaving executive session.
We are in an executive session.
We were gonna join executive session. Okay.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, we are in executive session.
Back it.